This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone, gentlemen. Everybody that came here is love to see people out here. We're going to start tonight's meeting, and if you would, I'd like everybody to please stand, and we shall do the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America is through the covenant which stands, "One nation, under God, in this world, with every right and justice for all."
If everyone will please remain standing alike, Mr. Waters, please do an indication for sir.
That's right. My respects, Jesus, and heaven, Father, who has done to keep the name of Jesus from being for the wonderful day, for the bad, for whatever having, thank you for the rain that you have sent always. Blessed are thou, Father, that come to the meeting tonight as it was leading, it was guiding us and helping us to be in a way that we can help each other, we can help the community to go forward and to do better than our own. Thank you for what you've done, what you want to do for us in prayer.
And if I will, I'd just like to get a moment of silence for some recent citizens who passed away. Patricia Green, Virginia Hicks, Mary Lou Beckett, and Geraldine Dickerson. Just a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Everybody can be seated. First, let's come off with the conflict of interest statement. If anybody on this board has a conflict of interest with anything that we're discussing this evening, would please now let the board know. Also, everybody here, not only us as well, please put your phones on vibrate or cut them off so we don't hear everybody's special ring tones. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda as it is. Do I have a motion to adopt agendas as it is? Do I have a second? All in favor? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion is carried. Next up, where is that coming from? It's one of these mics on? Heather, what are you doing over there? Okay, let's try it again. A motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Waters, a second. All in favor? All right, so we have public comments. We had one person signed up. I believe it was Mac. Ms. Holtz, are you going to speak for him this evening?
I guess we could tend to this conference. He was going to inform the board of the spread. It's July 4th fireworks. I'm sorry, he'll have to do that to him, but at some other time.
Okay.
He could, he couldn't.
I hope he's doing okay. All right, thank, tell him we wish him well. Thank you for the information. Last year was amazing, I'll just say that, the show they put on. I had no idea what was going on until I walked outside, it's like, wow. Stunning, stunning. Well, thank you so much. There was nobody else, I believe, sign up to speak in public. Okay, so next up is the discussion of the right-of-way conveyance for Gulf and Dolphin Drive. We have Mr. Brock Daniel. Sir, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm Richard Parker from three Rocklands. Submitted the application.
Okay.
Thank you all, Commissioner, and may I have your seat this evening? We are here to discuss the ordinance you adopted last year, I think it was, for the town to kind of process their takeover streets within the town limits. So we are requesting that the town take over Gulf and Dolphin Drive, which is directly across the street from here to the shopping center, signalized intersection back to the shopping center itself. We put together an analysis, analysis assembly of the information compiled from the technical analysis, what the services have got to ask all of us right now. What we're asking you is, number one, will you entertain accepting the street if everything meets the standards? And two, if you would allow us to continue where we put the staff, come up with the, any type of a reconstruction plan that may be necessary, whether it be just overlaying pavement or some repair areas. So we wanted to just that come to, come before you, before your permission to pull with that, if the town is in favor of it.
I'll open it up for comments. Anyone have any questions or comments?
You're talking about from 24 just up to the shopping center, beyond that?
Yeah, it is beyond that. There are two separate properties, so it's only right next to shopping center, from 24 back to where it splits the shopping center, it goes back.
Okay.
There's a 60-foot easement on it already for access and utility for long times. It's just for those who use that same 60-foot easement there to get turned over.
This is a question. It's a 60-foot right-of-way through there, but as you get up there partway, it's much wider, the area is much wider than 60 feet. It's the road, it's delineated, so this is the road. All of the rest of that is part of the shopping center, parking lot, or passenger.
I guess I would ask the commission what you would rather have. I think we are okay to dedicate that pull-off area well, it's all be committed to all of what the town would like to accept, so we can go from curb to curb, which is wider than 60 feet as you approach the shopping center. We can dedicate the whole angle, 60 feet, clear of the town, probably better to dedicate it all, so it's not.
Well, yeah, that, that shopping center was put in, almost seemed like roadway and the way it was was an afterthought. But it is, I would only be interested in the 60-foot right-of-way, it's typical. And then the, what is not roadway, delineate whether, how they use it to facilitate parking or whatever. The people in the shopping center, people in that front. I would be interested in having a right-of-way that goes from 60 feet to, something much wider.
You would be more interested in having it, but then you strike it out.
Yes. Yeah, even though there is payment to the side, the department, the town, all of the responsible. You brought up all these, these standards.
Any more comments, gentlemen? I don't think, I can't speak for the board, but personal opinion is, is we did give direction as far as what would be acceptable for the town to take that over. And naturally, the road would have to be brought up to those conditions regardless. To me, it looks like, you know, just from a cost of doing business aspect of it, the road needs to be repaired, and if it's, if it was my road, then that's my responsibility to do that. But I don't think these guys can really give you a yay or a nay as far as what they will accept until it's actually been fixed. So I would, I would say it's a discuss, this is discussable right now, but I would say get it fixed and come back and see us. And as long as it meets the criteria set forth, I found the engineering report very, very informative to find the subbase there. I was surprised to see that, and it's, you can't tell it from the surface, but the subbase did look like, you know, from the cores, samples and everything, that you got a good base to go with to get that done. So like I say, I can't, I can't speak to the board right now, so it's premature because the work's not been done.
And I think that's what the owner wanted to find out, if you are willing to accept, if you are not willing to accept, they're a little different, and they're not going to modify modifications that may be necessary. So if the town is still willing, in the end, you go through the process and sort of come back with a form of confirmation.
So if you want to connect, if we end in removing, what, six inches? If that's the ball, is he so, there, maybe place of the price that it's taking?
Some of it may have to be replaced, some of them in these places, places that on the board end of it, the thickness is very, it's very good, there's good subgrade below it, so it may not have that, or that, that would be the places. Rolls with fruit rolls, some trucks and fire, is a flooding, either subgrade, or a standard. So I could not be able to straighten the ball and start all over again, the portion of that, and if I have service, could we move it?
No other comment I would have, like, if you look at town or city planning, if you look at Dolphin Dolphin and Enterprise, the other eventually, center part of the triangle here becomes developed, those would be tied to access roads, coming to that more than just those two roads. In other words, it might be one off 58, one off Tabor and Melon, and those would be thorough there. I don't see the town having anything, like the service road in back of the shopping center, or the access road across the front. I don't see us owning any of that. Only those that would be part of the road system to get in and out of. One of them that's.
And I think the shopping center, they're really only looking to a fair drive that is accessed by more than the shopping center.
Any more questions, comments? Well, I don't know if we told you what you need to know or not. I mean, other than like I say, it is in our specs, we did, we did give that information, and once it is brought up, the specs come back and say it's.
All right. Thank you, that's what we need for now.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, next up is staff update. Zach?
All right, I got a couple of things to run through this evening. Hope everybody got a chance to see the town welcome sign for Memorial Day, so we did something special to just go around. You can see we actually had some uplighting on the crepe myrtles out there, so looked pretty cool, and I know folks enjoyed that. We'll be doing that again for 4th of July out there. We also have all of the military banners up throughout town, and the American flags flying on the corridors throughout town, so it's really good. And a shout out to the Public Works Department for getting those up. See another one here with the American flag and the military banner below. We also completed the spring 2021 paving project on a number of roads throughout town. So this is Bog Sound Drive with the fresh new coat of asphalt on it. And then here's also around Loma Linda with the new asphalt, so some good improvements throughout town on several roadways, so we're happy that that was accomplished. Also want to recognize Public Works Department, they've got the fence up at the Pettifer Creek Launch Site, so you can see that's coming along nicely, making good progress on that. Also, want to give a shout out, when I was out of town, I came back and I found that the garden out there in the community park had been weeded, and I was wondering, I was like, wow, somebody put some time in pulling all these weeds, and sure enough, found out it was Chief McKinney and pulled the weeds from the garden. So shout out to Chief McKinney for doing that, and for keeping it looking beautiful out there, so going the extra mile, so want to give him a shout out for that. The Public Works Building is coming along, the pad is poured, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we're kind of running short on time, but hopefully they'll be getting out there and getting the new Public Works Building in place. But the good news is we're making some progress, we do have the concrete pad in place. Want to recognize this gift that was provided to the town. It's from Shop 210 Craft Works, and Heather might be able to, I know it's Drew that lives in Old Cape Carteret, just want to recognize Drew Martin, that lives in Old Cape Carteret, brought this up, and it's displayed in the lobby here at Town Hall. So really cool how they took the town logo and informed this clock, so just want to give them a shout out for that, a nice donation to the town, looks really sharp. And this Friday, we have the Cape Carteret movie in the park, that's going to be at 8:30 PM, it's going to be Ferris Bueller's Day Off, so it's Friday, June 18th, so stop by the community park. It's going to be our, it's not going to be a drive-in movie, it's going to be back to the pre-COVID movies, where you can bring a blanket and a lawn chair and sit out there and enjoy movies, so we're excited for that. And then the following Friday, we have the Sounds by the Sounds Summer Concert Series. We have the first concert, which is the Mad Fiddler, that's going to be from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. And we're also going to have a concurrent event that runs from 5:00 to 8:30 PM, which is a public engagement opportunity where folks can come and give input on the comprehensive slash Camelandies Plan. So there's going to be some surveys out there, there'll be some representatives from Summit who will be getting feedback on the Landies Plan, so that's a good opportunity to come out and give some input. It's a really important document for the town, so definitely encourage those who haven't had the opportunity to take the survey yet, or to give input, to stop by and to do so, and also listen to some music in the park. So hopefully we'll get a good turnout, since we're sort of co-mingling those two events. And then our big event that's right around the corner is the Crystal Coast Watermelon Festival, so we've got a bunch of vendors signed up. This is going to, this is really shaping up to be a huge event, so I'm really excited. July 10th, 3:00 to 8:00 PM, right here in the community park. So it's, I think it's going to be a really good time. The band stopped by today and was looking at the stage out there. We've got, I know, over 20, I think close to 30 vendors signed up now, so there's going to be a lot of things to do, and it should be a really good time for the whole family, so definitely encourage everybody to mark your calendars and come out for the first annual Crystal Coast Watermelon Festival here in Cape Carteret. And I'll show one more thing while I'm on the topic of the Camelandies Plan, and that's the website that is available. It's capecarteretplan.com. And on this website, there is a feedback form here at the bottom, where you can provide your vision for the town, so you can fill this information out and submit it to Summit, who's the contractor for this project. You can also go to the interactive map, which is map.social, and you can provide information on the map about points of interest throughout Cape Carteret. So you can see some people have put different points on the map, you can click on them and find out what people have indicated. Somebody's put water on there, I guess to delineate Bog Sound. Looks like they've got traffic congestion indicated on there, looks like a flooding issue in another spot. So you can basically log in here, you can create an account, or you could also use a guest account, you don't have to create an account, but a good way to provide feedback right here on this map, and this feedback will be used in the development of the Camelandies Plan. So definitely a good opportunity there to participate in that. And then there's also surveys on the website, where you can go and fill out the survey on Survey Monkey, and that information will provide critical information for the consultant to formulate the comprehensive Camelandies Plan. So I think that's everything I've got for now. If you've got any questions about how to access any of these surveys or the maps, let us know here at Town Hall. You can also stop by and pick up paper copies of the survey if you don't want to fill it out online, and we can pass this along to the consultant as well. That's all I've done for now.
That sounds good. I think the town speaker points a little jealous because they had a watermelon festival back in the day, I believe, so their losses are gained. All right, next up is the public hearing on the FY 2021-2022 budget and approval of said budget ordinance. Zach?
So everything is the same as it was at the previous Board of Commissioners meeting. This is just going to be moving forward on the adoption of the actual budget ordinance. I'm going to get that on the screen in just a moment.
Do we have any feedback from the public notice?
I don't believe that we had any feedback on the actual budget. We could go ahead and open up the public hearing on the FY 21-22 budget, just see if there's any public comments on the budget.
All right, so I'll need to entertain a motion to leave the regular meeting and go into a public notice. Have a second? All right, all in favor? Thank you, gentlemen. We are now open for public hearing. Anybody here would like to say anything about the budget? Ms. Holtz?
That's a whole stop for seven and ten, but I believe every year I've treated the commission to consider more yard breaks to pick up. And we have a machine, and we have a piece of wood. I would encourage the town to pick up yard breaks. And many retired and widowed people in town, but a beauty, no way to get their yard breaks all themselves, hire someone. I think this could be the second most popular activity the town does through the citizens after the vote.
Thank you. Anyone else? And with that, I will entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing and back to the regular meeting. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, gentlemen? Thank you. And with that done.
All right, so we'll have the vote on the actual FY 21-22 budget ordinance. I've got it there on the screen. And the budget is balanced at $1,868,217 for revenues and for expenditures, and the tax rate remains the same at .2125 for each $100 valuation, so we just request that the board take the official vote on the budget ordinance.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, do just that. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Time for a second. All in favor? I'm sorry, I didn't, my bad. Sure, please do so.
Every year, it's the same, out of public, to the budget, to provide services. This is my fourth one. All four years, we've been asked to pay taxes. The first year, it's something over, one, ten and a half. That's for years of operation at all. Still maintain the same map or increase our services to the citizens. I commend the middle one, elder commissioner, but it's a challenge, but every year we become a little suspicious.
Any other comments? All right, all in favor? Judge passes. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the National Pollinator Week proclamation. I'm going to read this to you, gentlemen. Let me pull it up right quick. Fifty thousand pages waiting through here. Here we. Whereas pollinators, excuse me, some words are just difficult for me. Whereas pollinators, such as thousands of species of bees, are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinators provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, diverse ecosystems in towns and cities, and whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities. And whereas the town of Cape Carteret manages parks, public landscaping, and other public lands that may include greenways and wildlife habitats, and whereas the town of Cape Carteret provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and maintenance of their habitats. And now therefore, I, William Baker, Mayor of Town and Carteret, do hereby proclaim, pardon me, ladies and gentlemen, the week of June 21st through 27th, 2021, is our municipality's observance of National Pollinator Week. So, gentlemen, I'd love a motion to accept this proclamation and approve.
We would accept.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor? Eric, let's let that be.
Thank you.
Approved.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, that's awesome, though. Need more bees, absolutely. All right, next up is a selection of the dredging contractor for the Manatee Boat Ramp Channel and consideration of budget amendment 2020.2021.18.
The town of Cape Carteret has secured funding through the state shower draft navigation channel dredging and aquatic weed fund to dredge the Manatee Boat Ramp Channel. The maximum project cost will be $48,000, and the maximum dredged material amount is 975 cubic yards. The town of Cape Carteret solicited proposals for the project and received the following two proposals. One was from TD Year Marine Construction for $34 per cubic yard, and the other was from Coastal Dredging for $47 per cubic yard. The town anticipates completing the project by June 30th, 2021. Dredge material will be disposed of either at the adjacent properties on the north side of the canal, the Public Works Facility on Taylor Nation Road, or the Pettifer Creek Launch Site on NC 58. Based on the quote provided by TD Year Marine Construction, the total project cost would be $33,150. Carteret County has graciously offered to participate in half of the local third for the project. Therefore, the cost breakdown for the project will be as follows. State grant, which would cover two-thirds, would be $22,100. The town portion, which would be half of a third, would be $5,525. And the county portion would be half of a third as well, which would be $5,525 for the project total cost of $33,150. And a budget amendment will be required to pay for the project upfront so that the town can seek reimbursement after the project has been completed. Staff recommends including an additional $1,658 to cover the permitting and any unforeseen costs associated with the project that equates to 5%. The following changes would be needed to the Parks and Recreation Department. Revenue transfer from the undesignated fund balance, $12,431, and expenditures, increased line item 65.923, increased by $12,431. Once reimbursements are received for the project, the funding will replenish the town's undesignated fund balance. And the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider approving budget amendment 2020.2021.18, to consider selecting TD Year Marine Construction as the contractor for the Manatee Boat Ramp Channel dredging project, and to authorize the town manager in consultation with the town attorney to enter into a contract with TD Year Marine Construction.
All right, we have a motion approved. All right, a second? All right, any discussion? That is.
Six thousand bucks to get that thing cleaned out like that. Great job.
Thank you.
You said one of the places to put it is on the property adjacent to the, now, on the map here, you show it right in front of the park. Does that mean you're going to kind of block off the park?
Yeah, I think we're going to be all offloaded. We're not, basically wherever they can get that barge in there and be able to maneuver is going to be the offload site. That was more for the approval on the grant fund. That was more for the, uh, the approval on the grant fund for where it's going to be disposed of. Um, and it's also kind of going to depend on what kind of material we pull out of there as well. So, uh, they could go to any of those three sites.
So it's not going to be currently in the, in the park, are you mind?
No, no, it's, regardless, it's going to leave, leave that site.
It'll just be an inconvenience for, did it give you an estimate of the time on that?
Uh, we'll have, yeah, we'll have to wrap it up at eighteen thirty, have to get it done, this is all you. You said it'd take about a week to get it done.
Like that, I was curious, okay. Any other discussion, comments? I have to agree, and, and thank the county as well. And the whole dredging project just went through. I know Bay Shore and you guys can't thank them enough for the toleration of that because I know that was, that was a rough thing. But you got some nice new pavement down and county came through and did exactly what they said we were going to do. So kudos to them and we're very happy about it. And man, it's nice to be able to motor around there now. It's really, really good. I just hate it now, everybody's going to go where I want to go. But, uh, very nice, very nice. Yes. Very happy. Any other comments? All right, all in favor? I'm sorry, Mr. Kenny.
You know, if you get out there towards the waterway, that doesn't nearly, doesn't nearly mean. Go to six feet or something like that.
I think it was like to at least three to four being low water. I think that whatever that measurement is, um, but I think usually it's like four feet.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, all in favor? Much curious, thank you, gentlemen. Next up, selection contractor for the bulkhead replacement at the Ferry Landing Park.
All right, the town of Cape Carteret has been working to complete repairs at the Ferry Landing Park in anticipation for a grand opening this summer. One of the pressing issues that needs to be addressed prior to opening is the condition of the bulkhead along the southern portion of the property. The Board of Commissioners previously allocated twenty-three thousand dollars towards the bulkhead replacement effort. The town solicited proposals for the replacement of the bulkhead at the Ferry Landing Park. And town staff recommends replacing one hundred feet of bulkhead along the southern portion of the property so that the park can be opened following the completion of work. The following proposals were received. TD Year, and I, I've broken it down, um, to a per linear foot cost. TD Year Marine Construction, three hundred fifteen dollars per linear foot. Norris Marine Construction, two hundred thirty dollars per linear foot. And Seacoast Marine Construction at two hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-one cents per linear foot. The Board of Commissioners are asked to consider selecting Norris Marine Construction as the contractor to complete the bulkhead replacement on the southern portion of the Ferry Landing Park and to authorize the town manager in consultation with the town attorney to enter into a contract in the amount of twenty-three thousand dollars with Norris Marine Construction to complete this project. And and that's the area in reference to, to where we're talking about for the replacement. Um, it'd be on the southern portion of the property there. Um, they do a hundred feet. Basically, that's the area where the bulkhead is in the worst condition there at the end. Um, and it's beyond a, a point where we can make repairs in order to open it up. So you can see some of the holes in the bulkhead there. This should remedy all that and get it to a condition where we can open it up to the public safely. And this is kind of the overview version here, but you can see where the bulkhead squares off across the end and it runs to the north. Uh, we're going to try to secure the permit for the entire length of the bulkhead and keep that permit active for additional sections in the future. No, we'll leave the existing segments in place, go about two feet out waterward. Um, it will be a little bit further for a while to there on the end, um, basically to form a straight wall there at the end on the southern portion of the property. And then we'll backfill behind that, so. No, leave in place and then backfill over top. And that should, in the long run, it's a more stable outcome, uh, because you have a couple layers of bulkhead behind. It's also must, much more cost effective than having to pull it out, so.
Didn't, didn't it say that, uh, they weren't going to be responsible for fill?
Yeah, we do have plenty of, of fill available. Yes, yeah, yeah, we've got plenty available at, at Public Works. So we have a nice mountain over there. Yeah, so we'll have you. Yes, yeah, that encompasses the entire length there at the end. Yeah, so we have some separation between the existing.
All right, do I have a motion approved? Second? Words? Any more discussion? All in favor? All right. All right, next up, consideration of budget amendment twenty twenty dot twenty twenty-one dot one nine for our fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, year-end adjustments.
All right, so this is hopefully what will be our last budget amendment of this fiscal year. So we've, uh, this is number nineteen, so we've done plenty of budget amendments. But this one, do some between departments and make sure that we have enough money in each of our departments to finish out this fiscal year. Um, so it's, it's important that we have enough in there as we approach the final days in this fiscal year, leading up to June thirtieth, um, in each of the departments to cover our operating costs. So this ensures that we have enough funds in each of the departments. Um, so the total amendment would be for forty, would be for forty-seven thousand, five hundred sixty. Um, and then you can see there with the revenues increased to forty-seven thousand, five sixty. And if we need to go into any of the specifics, we can, um, but it's for each department, there's certain areas that there's some overruns, um, and then there are some areas where it wasn't, there were no overruns and it was under, uh, we're able to move around within departments. So, um, we're in pretty good shape, but just, uh, to finish out the year and make sure we have sufficient funds available to continue to operate, so. So I just ask for, uh, approval of budget amendment, uh, twenty twenty dot twenty twenty-one dot nineteen.
All right, do I have a motion? Okay, one second. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is kind of our house, our housekeeping at the end of the year to make sure everything is where it needs to be.
I just know from a staff perspective, it's always a big pain in the rear at the end of the fiscal year because usually you stop spending before June, you know, but naturally the town's got to go on. You got to keep working, you got things to do, you have to cover. Yeah, we'll just print some money, right?
Yeah.
Any other comments? If not, then, uh, I'll ask for all in favor. All right, motion carries. All right, and now Commissioner comments. I'll start with, uh, Commissioner Martin, if you have any comments, sir.
The other thing I want to say is the no way. I spent a number of hours out there trying to find the anchor and chain. Those snowing buoys, you know, there's always going to be people that don't violate. I do see being out there all the time. I see with those buoys, more people going slow, you know. That's all I have.
Mr. Waters?
I, to many of the staff. Uh, I agree with her. What she's asking, I remember doing four, great enough for the pickups. And for the good start. I did have a question, go back to number seven. If, uh, y'all move forward, the. When do you anticipate the start of the finish of that project?
Mr. Miller?
I'm here for it. I would also want to thank the staff, Public Works, Police Department, everything they've been doing. I do have a question for, uh, our town mentor. Are we, is everything still on schedule with the kayak launch as far as completion, opening, and works? Start you losing?
Uh, we're as close to the schedule as we can be. Uh, we're waiting on our state stormwater permit. They've got ninety days to review it down in Wilmington, so, uh, that's kind of the big holdup right now. We're going to try to go ahead and get the turn lane done into the property. Um, we've discovered a pipe that has to be added on to there in the DOT right of way. Uh, so that's a little bit of a, something we got to work through. But, uh, we should hopefully be able to get the turn lane into the property done in this fiscal year. And then we'll have to probably come back in July to knock out the driveway and the parking lot aspect of the project. But, uh, ideally, we'll try to get as much stuff done on the property that we can do, um, without requiring a stormwater permit, get that done in this fiscal year. Um, so that's why Public Works, we get the fence up and everything else. That way, the last thing that'll have to be done there is just putting down the asphalt for the parking lot and the driveway. And we can cut the ribbon and, and open it up, so. Um, so we're progressing as fast as we can within the limitations that we have, uh, on for the stormwater permit, so.
Nothing heard.
Nothing to report. Well, I'll just, uh, end it up by saying I can't say enough about our small town. I love being here. Most people I've talked to also love being here. We have an amazing staff. I can't say enough great things about you guys. And Zach, you've done an awesome job this year. The biggest headache is putting these budgets together for us. And I think you gave us a great presentation, then it's up to us to, to look at it and filter through it and give you, uh, direction as far as where we want to go from there. And thank you, board, you gentlemen, have done an awesome job this year. I'm just so glad we're all able to sit in here together and, and see everybody's faces. And it's, it's, it's just awesome. I'm still sort of, uh, I hate to go negative, but at the state level, there's so much being passed through right now that will affect us if it goes through. So we'll just see what happens and go from there. Some of these, these new regulations and laws are getting ready to put forth. But other than that, I just, I had a one guy that complimented, he said he rode through our town and he thought it was one of the most patriotic thoroughfares he's ever been through with our, uh, banners and the flags. And I, I thought that was awesome. And I want our town to continue to do just that. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Hold on a second. We don't? Okay. Back to, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, sir. Second, all in favor? Thank you again, once again, gentlemen. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here this evening. Thank you, sir.